Reinvigorating the economy. So I thought it was important to come down here and represent the governor's office to make sure our voice is heard. So please accept my apologies. I'll sit in and listen as long as I can here, and then I'll probably get with Mark Woodville of course later this week to get some good presentations.
Thank you, Mayor. We're really happy that you're down there and getting some of the answers to some of the questions that we all have. So, Mark, would you like to just turn it over to you?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Mayor, can you mute yourself, please?
Thank you.
And we do need to do the Pledge of Allegiance and a roll call.
Oh, thank you.
So Mayor Mangarelli is present via phone. Mayor Protem Orr.
Here.
Councilman Blair.
Here.
Councilman Good.
Present.
Councilmember Rusing.
Present.
Councilwoman Scholl.
Yes.
And Councilman Sishka.
Here.
All are present. Thank you.
Councilwoman Scholl, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Welcome to the annual budget workshop for fiscal year 21. Hard to believe. I know it's been an interesting last three months, so I thought we'd start with talking about the economic impact that we're seeing and just some thoughts of what's happening. The next few slides are taken from FHN Financial's various reports and presentations that we were, saw last week. We talked, what was it, a month ago about the COVID impact and how this is different than other recessions that we've seen in that it's kind of led by unemployment, where other recessions, business slows down and then people get laid off. This one was people got laid off, business slows down. So it's hard to predict how the recovery will be. Obviously, a lot of challenges as we look at it. Looking at this slide, this shows the published unemployment rate, which was like 14 and a half, but the reality is there was a problem with their classification when they did that household survey, and the real rate, if they had done it correctly, would have been closer to 20% unemployment. That's important as we look at this when you consider that currently in the United States, about 51% of all employees are employees of small business, and small businesses are what's going to be hit hardest earliest during this recession because, of course, they're not as well capitalized as the bigger companies, being without revenue for a month or two months can really impact a balance sheet liquidity. And bankruptcies are going to be interesting over the next year as we see a lot of these smaller businesses not able to recover from this, even with the subsidies. One way to look at this unemployment, again, this is unemployment in numbers, is if we sketch it back, unemployment has gone back to a level from 1995. This graph, of course, shows from 95 to 2020. As you can see, that drop took us all the way back to the same level of employment that we had 25 years ago. Again, very, very concerning. Employment and reemployment is really going to be the key to how the country comes out of this recession, and the bankruptcies are going to be a big part of that. I thought this was an interesting chart. It was in one of their newsletters, but it gives you, again, employment, the spike, again, that we're going to see this year, and then how quickly we would be back to what's considered full employment, you know, below 5% unemployment, and the different GDPs that would be necessary. So even with a 3% GDP, which would be very aggressive over the next four years, it would take us four years to get fully back to full employment. And as you can see, when we get looking at more of a realistic GDP, it stretches out up into 2030. So it's, it would be nice if it's going to be a quick rebound, and we're going to see a quick rebound as things open up, but it's not going to fully rebound to where it was. This is the GDP, the different components of GDP. And again, all these slides on unemployment and stuff are on a national level. It's not about our local economy. Our local economy will respond a little differently, as it always has in the past. But looking here, you can see the last three quarters of 2020 have been projected, which is why they're lighter color. So obviously, we're going to see this fourth quarter, which we're still in, is going to be down significantly, which everybody expects that. No surprise there. We'd expect the third quarter of 2020 to rebound significantly. And then again, the question is how low, well, the fourth quarter, will it stay positive? Will it go negative? I think you're probably going to see it even go a little more negative than that when you start seeing these bankruptcies, the JCPenney's filings, and the other even big retailers that you're going to see hit bankruptcy with this. It gets you back to more of a, probably of a W recession, where we're up, or we're down, we're up, and we're back down again. Chris Lowe over at FHN Financial is projecting 20 to end down 6% on GDP at this point, which is probably close. That's what we talked about about a month ago. So with that, obviously, like I said, this is an unusual economic condition. We haven't seen one. It's hard to model. None of the models know how to respond to it. None of the stock buying models know how to respond to it. But we do know how to deal with uncertainty when we budget. We've been through recessions. We've been through other uncertainties. So we'll get more into the budget now and how we're going to deal with uncertainties of this year. Obviously, we've had a lot of stuff, most of which, almost all of which dealt with before the whole pandemic and the shutdown, but you had strategic planning. We did mid-year. The departments submitted all their stuff. Once the departments submitted everything to us, that's when things started to fall apart. So we worked with the departments and the city manager to revise those submissions and to come up with a budget. And we're at the 519 there, the annual budget workshop today. So the presentation approach, obviously, like last year, the detail of the capital plan, 175 pages, detailed departmental information, about 200 pages, was all put out on the website last week for the public and, of course, for council to see. The proposed budget is structured to maintain service levels while facing these very uncertain times of losses in revenues. We have a lot of contingencies in the budget, and we're going to talk about those as we go through it. We've, we've done a lot of shocking to revenues to not overbudget anywhere, but we've also put in contingencies so that if the economy recovers the way we think it will, we will be able to do some things that aren't in this budget. If it doesn't recover the way we think it will, we will still be able to maintain service levels, hopefully, depending on how, how it really gets. The capital projects, of course, is going to focus on utility funds. It's about utilities, and airport are about the only areas that have much capital this next year as we get into it. And like last year, Jody Rhodes and I, of course, are available for meeting with the public or any council individually to go into as much detail as anybody wants to do on this budget. You can just call or email us, and we'll be glad to set up an appointment. So just a quick summary, there is no annual merit or other employee pay increases authorized in this budget.
Timeout. When do we get to ask questions?
Anytime, sir.
This first bullet point, I haven't seen a pay compensation study. I don't know what 1% looks like, 2%, 3%. Are we going to get to see those numbers before we just sweepingly say, we're going to throw our employees underneath the bus one more time? Whenever there's a downturn, and I've been sitting here for 19 years, it's always employees that take it in the shorts. I'm not saying it's your fault.
Yeah.
But that's generally where we go, and we always go to the low hanging fruit first, and that's our employees. And we are going through a pay compensation study, and I want to look at, see where our employees are today, when everybody else is getting paid, because even though it's an uncertain time for us, it's an uncertain time for our employees. And I think it's wholly unfair to make a blanket statement that says, no, we're not going to do this unless we have some numbers to look at.
So...
So that's what I'm advocating.
Okay. Good questions, Councilmen. Now, the compensation plan, study is going on. We expect that to be done in the fall, and that'll come to council at that time for your review. The second sentence in that first bullet, if revenues recover, contingencies are in the operating budgets to enable council to, in the fall, at Christmas, you know, halfway through the year, say, yes, revenues are recovered, we want to do 1% or 2%, whatever council wants to do. So, you know, as opposed to going over a lot of numbers now, when we really don't know revenues, we're going to be back in front of council every other month talking about revenues and how they're coming in. When you get the pay compensation, we'll come back and say, revenues are recovering as we had hoped. Council, what do you want to do about compensation? You know, and that is really the time when we would discuss that. Again, this is not good. My employees don't like it. None of the employees like it, for sure, but you have other cities that are cutting employee pay already at this point. Yes.
Is class and comp considered a raise or are raises on top of a classification study?
So, good point. The regular, regularly, there's a merit increase in the pay system where employees can get a 0% to 3% increase each year on their anniversary based on performance. The class and comp, the classification study is more, are our pay levels where they're supposed to be? Are our benefit levels where they're supposed to be? What do we do to move employees to where they should be? That type of thing. So they are, good point, they are two kinds, two different things, for sure. But again, both would be able to be looked at in the fall when the study comes in. Revenue information will be available by then. Council will be able to make a more informed decision about, yes, we want to do the merit this year and look at implementing class and comp in the 2022 budget or whatever.
Mark, I appreciate it. City manager, I guess, I guess my point is, is when, as an average individual sitting here, and I see no annual merit or other employee increases, that's a pretty bold statement. Even though Mark just kind of laid it back a little bit by saying, we'll look as each month come along, I just have a hard time telling our employees, your employees as well, that we're not going to give you anything, and we don't even know what those numbers look at, look like, and we're saying that. We don't even know what, what does 1% across the employee base mean? What does that dollar figure, or 2% or 3%? And can we give part of it at July 1 and look at the numbers in May or some other time and give another increase? What does that look like?
Well, the merit system is done based on employee's anniversary. So if their, if their anniversary date is in October, they don't get their raise till October. So the merit doesn't happen July 1, so you can't really say, okay, everybody gets 1% on July 1, and if revenue come in, we'll do 2% on, on December or whatever. The, to give you some numbers, a 3% merit across the board costs about 17, 1.7 million.
That's 3%?
On anniversary date, yeah. That's, that's where we budgeted at, you know, it's a 0 to 3. So the question would be, obviously, you know, a third of that would be 1%, and, you know, so 500, 1,000, or 500, yeah, yeah.
Well, I know we have some strange times going on, and I know your comment that you just made about small businesses being down, and I'm sure there are some. I happen to be a small business, and I'm up 25%.
It depends on your industry.
Maybe I'm one of the unfortunate or fortunate ones that are like that. However, when we start looking at this uncharted time and you look at the numbers Costco's putting on the board and all the new cars I see driving around, we, you know, people have been pinned up, and now they're out buying cars, and I talked to Findlay Automotive, and they're having a banner last two months of selling vehicles. So the question becomes what, you know, instead of the hype and the fear, at some point in time, rather than just say, you know, our employees, we're not going to give you anything, I just feel that's a real rash of being negative in a negative world that we live in.
I hope we make a way in this meeting or this dialogue that we're not giving anything. It's a, let's wait and see what the world wants out of us. It's a cautiously optimistic, and I said to Billy about an hour ago, if November 19, November 20 would look similar, then maybe that's a positive. Maybe by the time January, so we can allocate a portion, or we can allocate all of the merit. Not knowing what this pandemic is going to mean long-term, that's a very awkward decision to make.
I understand.
You can all, I mean, you can make all sorts of people in the world about this decade instead of historically happening, and I think that's the test basis, which might be going forward behind, but it's actually not that good.
Right.
It's completely different. Just like Mark alluded very early, unemployment trails.
I guess, I guess what Michael, what my biggest fear here is, and it is a fear, is the fact that I want to see the pay compensation. I think the employees deserve to know what their worth is, number one. And so often on this council in 19 years, we've ignored the employees, and five years after that, we're in worse position than we are today. I don't want to see this ball rolling so far downhill, we lose people and we can't come back from it. So what I'm saying is we need to take an optimistic approach to it, but let's be realistic. If we need to cut a project's worth 1.7 million, I would rather cut a project or a recreation project or something to make sure. And I wish I was one of the big chiefs sitting down and...
Mr. Benge's budget, you want to cut?
You can cut my budget, too. But, but, but if we were, if I was one of the guys sitting down at the Phoenix, which we've argued about before, instead of having sewer and water as secured funds, we'd have police and fire as secured funds, and we wouldn't be having a lot of this conversation. So, but I'm not that guy sitting down there. So I'm just saying we need to be optimistic and, and walk slowly on this one.
Yeah, I, no, I would just like to say, I think one of the optimistic parts of this is that I don't think anywhere in this budget we're calling for cuts of employees. Am I right on that, Mark?
Yes, and exactly, and that was the point of this, is we, we don't want to put a merit in here, and then in September, when we see how things really are, end up having to lay, start laying people off. It would be better to wait until September, October and say, hey, it's, is recovering like we thought we should or would? Council, do you want to release the merit for this year type of thing?
When you talk a little bit about employee morale, here's a problem with a class and compensation system trying to be implemented when in the real world, there's no money. You basically go and do a study, and you say that, you know, Michael's worth X. Well, yay for Michael, but if you don't have the money to pay X, now you've created a false expectation in the employee that they're going to be compensated market rate when you're in the middle of an economic downturn. So there's like, there's multiple sides to this coin. I would like to have a real world situation where you could take the class and comp and implement it the way it needs to be, but there exists the money to do that.
Right.
And I don't think right now we know whether or not that's going to be the case. Does that make any sense?
Absolutely, it does. But I, but I also know that, you know, when they talk about people hurting out there, you know, and then we, you can look at, I don't know, I don't want to use fire and police all the time, but look at one of our sanitation workers. Maybe his wife was a hair cutter, and maybe she was out of work for the last two months, and maybe they're hurting on money as well. And now, all of a sudden, we might be talking about cutting his job or not giving him his due of what he's worth. I said, so my, my point is, I don't want to give a false expectation to our employees that we're not going to give them anything, because I don't think that's fair either. And so the first thing, Mark, no fault of yours, when I see no annual merit or employee pay increases. If I was an employee who read that, I wouldn't be happy. So I'm just saying, rather than be totally sad sitting up here, let's take it easy and look at it.
And I really appreciate that approach, because as Mark alluded to, you see some local governments that are making arbitrary decisions in my mind to just say, there's no merit, there's no raises, we're going to furlough people. Again, we just don't know.
I, I think that one of the problems that we may run into is that you can't pay for a permanent increase with a project from next year. So we could cut projects to pay for, but what happens the next year? That's the biggest problem. So I think that we need to, you know, kind of, you know, what you're concerned with, Steve, is you're concerned with, we're going to, okay, we're going to wait another five years before we even deal with this situation, and we can't do that. We, we've got to make sure that we are measured in our approach to, to employee compensation. But we also can't sacrifice, we can't, you know, I'll gladly, you know, pay you Tuesday for a hamburger today. We can't go about it from that standpoint either. So I would totally agree with you that we can't wait like we have in the past and totally disregard employees, but we also can't just look at, let's take off this project next year and pay people.
And I think you get my point across. I want the employees to be on the upper end of the list instead of on the bottom end of the list, where they always seem to be, and that's my whole point.
And thank you for that.
All right.
Appreciate that.
I'd like to make a comment as well. We have so many small businesses in our community that are desperately trying to survive right now. I know of about six that have permanently closed. So those employees and those owners are desperately trying to stay in business, much less be concerned about whether their employees are there going to get a raise. So we don't want to be sending a message to our small business community that we rely on for TPT, that, that we're going to be giving raises to our staff when they're not even potentially going to be able to keep their businesses in operation. So at least being able to say that we're not going to be entertaining additional compensation for our staff and our employees in the city while they're trying their best to just stay alive financially, we have to recognize the message we're sending to our business community as well. So from that perspective, I think you're right, until we can find out exactly, well, probably not even exactly, but some, some reasonable expectation of what our local economy is going to do to recover and when, and to what extent. How many times have we heard unprecedented, uncharted waters, et cetera? I mean, this is not a normal business cycle where we're going into a bear market and it might take a year or two to recover. The only thing that we've seen as even a remote comparison is the Great Depression of the 30s. So I think it's appropriate that we let the, our employees say, you're going to be able to likely keep your job if it turns out that things are going to be much better than, than we're being told. There might be an opportunity to implement some of these corrections and ranges, et cetera. But to send a message to the private sector that government employees are going to get a raise when you're not even going to be able to continue business is a wrong message to send. So that's my opinion.
Councilman Good, I apologize. If you could please speak into your microphone, because I know that people that are watching at home are not able to hear you. Thank you.
All right, you want to read that back?
All right, great discussion. Yes, please do interrupt me as we go. It's better to have these discussions as they come up.
Well, I just think it's important that we reiterate to our employees, we have many in the audience here today, and just that we value all of you, each and every one of you, and you're priceless in our opinion, and we're trying our best in this budget to hold on to everyone. A big, a big part of expense in this city is training, and we want to hold on to all of our employees, and I know there's some contingency built into this, too, right? So I just want, we do value, and I hope you all feel it, and been very proud of what this city's done over the last two months, so. Anyone else?
All right. Okay, great discussion. Bullet point number two. No new positions or any, even conversions of temporary employees are included in this budget. Again, unlike the first one where we have contingency if council sees it later in the year and wants to, you know, redo the merit or whatever, which can be discussed at that time, there just is no new positions added. There were some brought forward, and again, in defense of the departments, all the budget submissions were done before the world ended. So it was a different time when they submitted. We have also taken $19 million worth of projects and either pushed them out years, put them into contingencies to be considered, again, depending on revenues, or just, just got rid of them altogether. These not, not got rid of, but we were, had to push out vehicle replacements, including the police and building inspectors and other departments. It just, we're not going to go replacing vehicles even though they're needed. They can wait one more year. I mean, we got a lot of unknowns right now. Facilities repairs are, are put off one more year. That's city hall roof, our parking garage stair replacement, obvious ones, recreation improvements like Lower Goldwater, those are all put off until the economy recovers. Definitely not a priority in these type of economic times. The Granite Creek Corridor was not so much put off, and we'll talk about it when we give the capital size, as it was, we put it in as a grant, and we're going to look for 100% grant to maybe move that project forward if we can find money. But obviously, no general fund monies have been allocated to it for this year. And of course, even in streets, we talked, streets is heavily dependent on sales tax. Pavement preservation was reduced. We've taken Penn Avenue and Eastwood Drive reconstructions and put it in the contingency status. We'll talk about that when we get to it. That means it's not going to start till midway through the year, and only if revenues recover. If revenues don't recover, it'll have to be pushed to 22. So with that, just wanted to start with the overall budget. Our general operations, which includes some contingencies, is down 1.2% from last year. PSPRS, of course, is down based on tax loss there. What that means, I have a slide a little later we can talk about. We have a grant contingency or a general contingency. This is in addition to the contingency, the contingency that's included in the general operating budgets up above. There is some contingency I want to talk about as we get to those budgets, but this is additional. If, you know, who knows, you know, the economy recovers better than anybody thought, probably not going to happen, but, and we wanted to do city hall roof or something, we could move some contingencies around. Capital budget is even reduced. This is more of a, more of a fact that we had to move a lot of streets projects, but also it's just the cyclical nature of the large capital. Some years you have more than others. So we had a slide similar to this a month ago when we talked about the impact of COVID on the budget. I've done a little bit more detail, splitting businesses a little more granularly to get them into better categories and more categories. You'll notice that, you know, we have home improvement stores, we have hotels, we have restaurants separated, and you'll see, like we talked about before, general merchandise and food stores is a big part of our tax base. It's almost 40%. So 1% increase, 1% decrease in that 40% is a lot bigger deal than a 1% increase or decrease in hotels. Same with motor vehicles is a big part of our tax base, 15% is motor vehicles and repairs, construction and so on as you go around. You can see hotels, and this is, and this is important to note, this taxes, this graph is based on tax collected. Sorry, my allergy medicine's drying out my throat. I got one. The, but hotels are on here at 4%. That's at the 5.75 that they pay in compared to restaurants, which are at 6%, and they're only paying in 2.75. So, you know, so hotels aren't 2/3 of restaurants. They're really more like 2% of the taxable activity. They're just paying in twice as much tax, but this is based on tax. So we actually have March numbers, just got them. So as we look across the bottom, those categories that are on that pie chart are across the bottoms, and I included the percentages from the slide before in the title, so you would know how much. Again, food stores, 38%, big part of our tax base, significantly up the first two weeks of the closure. Again, this is March.
Toilet paper.
Yeah, that's a lot of toilet paper, but they're significantly up. Motor vehicle, as we expected and as we talked about, are down 14%. Construction, as Councilman Blair pointed out, he's busier now than he's been. Construction's still up. The general other is just down a little, the next three are just basically down a little bit. That's more of a regular fluctuation you see throughout the years that go up or down a few percent. Home improvement stores, you know, people are at home, a lot of stuff getting done. Craig was just sharing with me that our yard cleanup this year was 500, 577 tons of debris, which is three times, 260 to double what we... 263 double what we usually take. Restaurants and bars are down as well as hotels, no shock there. The numbers Mr. Heine has seen puts hotels down about 80%. Obviously, this is right there because this was only two weeks of a month. So this was only half of a month, they were down 40. So we'd expect to see that closer to 80 as we get into April. And likewise with restaurants, I think you'll see that down almost double again as we get into it. But important, which I put in the title, I didn't know how to show it on the graph, but actually, March taxable activity was unchanged to last March because of the increase in the general merchandise made up for all the downturns in the smaller parts of our tax pie. Which is good, not going to see it in April, April will be negative. But, you know, it's not good, it's not healthy. You're, the slide before the pie of the revenue of the city, it's important that it stay diversified and stuff. So you can't have pieces of pie dying. So we are still very, I am still very concerned about small businesses, which make up those restaurants and those type of things, not being able to come back and not reestablishing or the slowness that that might take. So with that, I guess I'd pause and take a drink if anybody has any questions on the taxable activity. Anybody surprised by that? I was surprised by the increase in general merchandise. I didn't think it would be close to 20%. I thought it'd be, I thought it'd be up, but I didn't think it'd be up that much.
You know, it's like going to Lowe's and Home Depot. You couldn't find a washer dryer or a freezer in any of those stores. So whether people are using it as an opportunity to update their homes because they're sitting there wondering what they're going to do next, I don't know. I mean, all this fear of running out of beef has put fear in people where they're buying freezers as well. And Sonic just notified me yesterday for some reason, I got to, maybe because I used to be in the bread business, that they have no beef at any of their stores because their supplier is out of business because of the COVID-19. They found cases in their buildings where they shut down. So there's some fears out there for that.
Well, and Bob Bean has shared with us that Affinity is having record sales right now, but they're going to run out of inventory and then there's going to be a supply chain because they're not manufacturing more RVs right now. So it's really going to be the supply chain that's really going to affect, in some respects, how we continue to do if there are products to sell.
And that's a great comment. And then other slides of the general economy that I didn't want to waste time on today. You're even seeing a decline in steel production. So I mean, that's way down on the supply chain. So even if you wanted to make RVs now, you got to wait for the steel mills to gear back up. So the slowness went through the whole supply chain relatively quickly, it seems like. So what do we do for revenue projections? Generally, for next year, we're looking at a 15% off of the budget for 2020, which you can see the numbers there on slide 12. Those are significant. Is 15% enough? I think 15% is conservative. That's actually 20% from where we were nine months into 21, or into 20. We were showing an increase of five. So to go 15 off of our budget is really a reduction of 20 of where it would have been had we not had a pandemic this year. Bed tax, we took that down significantly. I think it's going to be hard for that to recover quickly. I mean, conferences have been put off, ball leagues have been put off. It's going to take a while for that to cycle back up, people to be comfortable. Are we going to have more flu in the, our COVID in the fall of the year? And what that, what's that going to do to travel? What's that going to do to the economy? Those are the type of things that we're just very nervous about as we put a budget together. That's why we put a lot of contingencies in this. Property taxes, we talked about. We did do the publishing so that council can consider an increase in the property tax. That shows 10% less because of new construction. It's actually an 8.2% increase in the levy. And that's basically the last three years we haven't done it. And this year you get 2% a year, of course, it compounds, so it's 8.21. Have a next slide, we can talk about what that means if council wants to proceed with it or not. Again, it's only $150,000 increase for that 8%. So is that worth it? Is, you know, what's it do to people's property tax rates? But if worse comes to worse, that's one less cop you have to lay off, that's that type of thing. Franchise, we think will be pretty level. State income taxes on a two-year lag. So in 2023, that will be down for the activity happening this year. But for this coming year, it's from two years back, so we know exactly what that number is going to be. State sales tax, we only took that down nine, close to 10%. And this was based on the numbers that they gave us, which actually brought it, it was about 15% off of the numbers they gave us. But again, early numbers before the whole economic issue started. But that puts it down 9% off of last year. Vehicle license tax, again, as Councilman Blair pointed out, a lot of new vehicles out there. That's tied based on more the newness of vehicles, as we all know who live in Arizona. And, you know, your 20-year-old pickup is only 30 bucks to register, but new cars are several hundred. Herf, very concerned with Herf as well as sales tax. Obviously, gas prices are down, so you think people would be driving more. And I think they're driving more than they would if they were up. But there's still a lot of people not going to work and not using gas. Gas sales nationally have dropped like 35%, but that's a dollar issue. So there's some price factor in that as well as just nobody's driving anywhere. I just heard globally, pollution levels have gone down 17% over the last two months just from everybody not traveling and working. So property taxes, this graph is the familiar graph. I'm sure you guys have seen, I've included several years here, more than we usually do. If we look at 21, this number here, 53.76, is with the full levy that we are able to do. And yes, it is higher than 20 by $1.78, but it's actually lower than 19. So our rate, our rate would be higher than last year, but not as high as the year before if council wanted to move forward with the property tax increase. And again, I guess we can continue to keep it in there. We're getting close to the next levels where we have to start publishing stuff in the paper on it. So any feedback council wants to give as to whether they want to go ahead and levy the additional 150 or not would be helpful.
It's substantially less than it was back in fiscal year 12.
Yeah.
Yeah. And the red, of course. Yeah. It is. And that's why I put this graph here. So, you know, you hear increase in property tax, but perspective. And again, it's still a 10th of what, what the fire districts are around us.
I, for one, have no interest in supporting an increase in property tax. The amount that would contribute is so infinitesimal relative to our total budget. And to think that we're going to try to tax our way out of a recession or a depressionary situation is the wrong message that we want to send to the community at large.
I agree with you.
It's a perfect example of the Laffer curve. You know, the higher you increase those types of taxes, the less revenue you're going to get and the less cooperation you're going to get from the, from the community at large. So I have no interest in supporting that period.
Anyone else?
So we're talking about a dollar?
$1.78 over last year. For a $200,000 house, of course. You multiply based from there.
But, you know.
I would never say that of council.
I, you know, I can imagine, I can understand Councilman Good and Councilman, Councilmember Musson's feelings about this situation. But I also think the reality of, are we cutting off our nose to spite our face with the possibility of reducing a public safety personnel person to do this? I think it's totally reasonable. It's not out of the realm of, I mean, back when in fiscal year 12, it was $88. It's $53 today. I'm just not getting it.
Well, I just think a tax increase is still a tax increase, especially a property tax increase on our homeowners. And I just think it would just send the wrong message. And I think we can explore other avenues. For example, have we looked into maybe transferring funds in between departments? Would that help the situation any?
The general fund departments, or you mean like have water subsidize police?
Yes, correct. I believe we can do that.
No, you can do internal loans, of course, they have to be paid back. You can't really subsidize police with water revenues. State law requires water rates be used to provide water services.
I'm sorry, I need to be a little more clear. The different department, the budgets, if there's some excess that's not being used, it can be transferred in between the departments.
Well, yes, but you would stay in the general fund. I mean, the general fund departments, of course, we can move appropriation between the different departments.
Well, I just think we can tighten our belt. And the last thing I would like to see is a property tax increase during these times. Thank you.
So Mark, what is the timeline for that decision? I think it was pretty clear the last time we mentioned this, we went ahead and posted just in case, but. What is that?
I believe the first publication, and again, we can do the publications and council cannot adopt tax levy. You're just out the cost of the publications. They start the first week of June, I believe. But again, they're all good points. You know, I'm a property taxpayer too. I don't want to pay more property tax, obviously. And it is not a huge number unless things get really bad and you're looking for every penny to try to keep public safety going. And it's something you can't do after this. I mean, you can do it next year, but you'll have to wait until next year.
Well, it becomes a bigger number when you start talking about getting away from the houses and you start talking about your commercial buildings.
Exactly.
Those are the people that are paying a chunk. And let's not forget, we got a jail tax that's going to happen on your property tax bill. And that's just one more stack upon, so I'd have to look at that a little bit more.
I agree. And, you know, sometimes we can say how much lower we are than CAFMA. At the same time, right now, a lot of people are hurting. A lot of people are hurting. And so we have a lot of fixed income individuals. So is that something we'll have to take up on the 26th as far as a vote, or do we just?
It's a roll call vote on the 26th if you want to move forward. And then the actual ordinance would be the first meeting in July.
Okay.
And I believe the roll call vote, and I look to legal or to Jody, I believe it has to be a super majority to pass.
I think it's a really tough time to do a tax increase for sure.
So we will just take that off. We'll just take that out of the budget and proceed without it this year. Does that sound good? Realizing, of course, it's not a large number, but.
It's not a hill that we're going to die on as staff. I mean, it's a political decision as much as it's a financial decision.
Absolutely.
At $150,000.
And I think, I think the mayor was pretty adamant last time as well that that's not something he'd really want to do. And so.
I do think that it's good for you guys to have some context, though, even if you don't make this decision about what this looks like over the longitudinal view. Because it really is quite amazing that we're levying, you know, 40, 50% less than we did.
It is. And I think that's.
Nine years ago.
I'm always glad to have this chart because I think it's something that we should often communicate a little bit more with our citizens is that we do have, really have low property tax. So.
Okay. All right. Now, the general fund budgets, obviously, we worked with all the general fund departments and they did a great job in bringing in lower operating budgets this year. Our non-departmental area is where the unfunded ARC portion of PSPRS that comes out of general fund comes out of that. And also in there is that contingency I was talking about that's contingent in the general operating budget. It's about 1.3 million in this operating budget. Of course, it's down because the ARC, the unfunded PSPRS liability ARC portion went down as we went through it. Going down the screen, everybody went down except one department who wanted me to call him out specifically, I believe. They knuckled down and went down a dollar. But as we go down, just to talk about a few of the adjustments. City Clerk's office did great with, you know, kind of reevaluating election levy, getting rid of some temp salaries and stuff, bringing her down 15%. Shawson Court was down 1.65. City manager was able to stay even. Budget finance, of course, always leading the way. All kidding aside, that is because we got rid of the business license this year and those costs will, of course, go away. But of course, so does the revenue. So it's, it's a net of not much help. Economic development went down, looked at some outside contractors and reduced those amounts. Community development is, felt that there would be some reduction in demand and permit demand and plan checks. So there's some reduction mostly related to outside review of those plans and things. Parks and Rec went down a little bit. Again, library also a little. Police and fires reductions, again, are primarily the fluctuation in that ARC that we get each year with the new actuarial reports. It goes up or down a couple of percentages and that fluctuates either way. Facilities went down with retirement and kind of reassignment of personnel and that kind of stuff related to the parking garage and that, those things. Overall, I think the general fund departments did a great job, you know, coming in at almost 5% less this year in their operating budget, including a contingency if council wants to move forward with that raise for employees later or some other effect. PSPRS funding. Slide 15, we look at the last two actual years. We have 18 and 19, what was actually sent. We have a projection for 20, of course, relating to the reduction in activity. And then our budget for 21. It's challenging, it's a lot better when we see those numbers going up each year to feel great about this thing being paid off early. Will this affect our ability to pay off in eight years like we've been talking about and hoping for? Hard to tell at this point. That's another thing you're going to know a lot more in six months or a year when we're standing here doing this all again as to whether it is. I would not be extremely concerned about one down year in a 10-year cycle. These things happen, it's expected, it's projected, that's why we use lower annual growth rates so that these fluctuations can happen. But we're still sending significant money next year budgeting to send. And again, we will send what comes in. So if, if the economy snaps back and we have 12 million or 13 million, we're going to send it. So it will be what it'll be. Council will have to move some contingency to make that happen. But of course, we will be sending the money. It's all relates to what comes in.
I just think where we would right now.
You'd have a different finance director up here.
That's for sure.
Total revenues, this again, the last, the slide we had before was more the tax revenues. This is citywide total revenues that we're looking at. And again, the taxes, you see those going down 15, bed tax going down 30. The property tax will only be going up 2% related to the new construction based on our discussion we just had. Again, a small, it's a small matter in the overall pile here. Intergovernmental ends up holding about level because property tax is going up because it's on a two-year lag, but we're seeing sales tax go down. So it ended up being about level. The license and permits are going down again. Community development is anticipating some slowdown in the construction activity. Government and services is down. Get a look at my cheat notes here. Again, from that slowdown in the building, that has to do with plan checks. License and permits is also down, of course, because of the sales, the business license going away. And then other things included some joint dispatch billings were higher last year related to some software that was in place. to some software that was in place. So that drives down that governmental services, a little bit more of a timing issue than an economic issue, really. Post recoveries, utility services, of course, going up. There were rate increases adopted this last year by council that are going into effect for both utility and solid waste. Airport services are showing at level. Golf services, again, at level. Internal services are down slightly, just more of a fluctuation in those billings. And other relates to the increase in the non-utility impact fees that council adopted this last year. Police, fire, and streets are shown in that other category as well as interest and miscellaneous and a few other things. But they're the ones that drove it up, the 4%. Grants are the grants. I mean, they're projections, whether we get them or not. Again, we have the offset to that contingent 5,000 in there. That's why you're seeing a 60% increase. And of course, we have some debt proceeds. Those are related to the WIFA loans that we entered into in the last two years. Those are pulled down as debt proceeds as those projects happen. In addition, there's some minor thing related to leases that are solid waste. Again, all those are at great rates, even though they'd probably be better if we did them today, but they were in the 1.5 range for 30 years, so.
So Mark, can you speak to that 59%?
That's the grants. Again, it's just a projection. You know, we moved the corridor to a 100% grant because we want to look for one and find one. It's not that we're going to find one, but if we do find one, we need to have the appropriation there. So that's why it's up 69%. There's a lot of contingency. Hope we can find a grant. If we don't find a grant, it doesn't affect our service levels. It affects how quickly we get a lot of these projects like the corridor or other things done.
Thank you.
Overall, revenues are down the 4%. More importantly is the operating section above is the, is the 5% down. And then looking at overall operating expenses, again, we looked at the general fund because general fund is heavily hit by this recession like it always is. But this is citywide. And again, you see most things are down significantly. Regional communication is up. That up that related to our portion of regional communication was included in the police and fire budgets already. This up that you see here is related to what we bill other agencies. So it, it has an offsetting revenue. The non-departmental expenses, again, are the PSPRS and the general fund, but also the PSPRS in our special revenue fund as well as the non-specific grants that are there. And then airport has an increase. You also had increase in revenues out there as well as some contingency for on-call engineering, which really drove that one up a little bit. But again, anticipating revenues or other grants to cover these things there. Overall, operating budgets across the city, which is good because it's the utilities. It's not just the general fund that's heavily impacted, but you know, it's all came down 2%. Capital, again, budgets fluctuate based on projects and when projects are timed and that type of thing. We're going to go into more detail here in the next few slides on capital. So with that total budget, of course, is down 8% like we saw on the slide earlier. Bed tax contributions, of course, heavily hit bed tax. Lot of reductions here from the year before. Contingency, of course, there is no contingency. A lot of things went down. You know, even, you know, some of the overtime to the general fund, of course, we assume there's less special events that need overtime, that type of stuff. So those type of things went down. I guess I just open that up to any questions. John's here. John's here in case you have any specific questions about what is brought forward there. And again, John brings all that back, the grants and all that back to council as they happen.
Yes.
What happened to the whiskey off-road money that we gave them? Was it used in terms of marketing and then unfortunately didn't happen?
That's a great question, Councilwoman. Thank you.
Yeah, we're currently having dialogue with Epic Rides on that. Some of the money was spent on marketing for the event since the downturn didn't happen till right before the event. He had, he'd laid some money out, but I'd asked for documentation of that. So we're going back and forth on that right now.
Anything else on bed tax at this time? So where's that put us in overall financial health? This, this slide talks about fund balance. This is, you know, your, you know, the, the good side of your balance sheet. So general fund going into this year has a 20 million, 20.7, 20.8 actually, million-dollar balance, which is great. Operating surplus, that's operating revenues, which Councilman Shiska was referring to earlier. If, if you give a raise, you want it to be covered by operating revenues because otherwise there's no money to continue paying those employees in the future. Operating surplus, those operating revenues against the operating expenses, including the contingency for the merit, is a positive, 1.2 million. So we are still positive operationally, as you see in that first column, second number down. Oh, I can put a little dot on it. Capital expenditures and transfers are significant, but it's important to keep, we're going to go into more detail on those. And Robin will explain why she's the majority of those, about 3.2 million are for the airport projects. I got to do that to kid Robin a little bit. But also included in that is 1.6 million in carry forward, which we'll talk about. These are projects that were budgeted in this year. Police cars that were ordered but aren't going to be received until the new year, that type of thing. So it wasn't, wasn't capital things we really had any choice on that was already in progress before this all started. They're not going to get delivered until next year. That makes up 1.6 with only .9 being new capital in the, in the general fund. And again, streets has a negative from operations. Oh, no, a positive, sorry. I was looking at the wrong number. It has the 8.9 million. That includes, again, contingency for, for raises and part of the capital because we do have, the streets fund does draw down very low because of the loss of revenues. But 2.4 million of that $21 million next year is that project that we're holding is contingency that will not be started till halfway through the year. So if revenues do not come in, that project does not happen to keep that fund from going into the negative. Again, that's part of these contingencies that we're holding and not releasing right away on July 1. We'll just have other projects we're working on, obviously. There's still $17 million worth of road projects going. Bed tax, you can see negative year from operations. Again, bed tax is not so much operations as it is grants, but they still have a positive fund balance at about 15% of their annual revenue at 134. So that's, that's good. That's where you want to be as you get into it. Lumped water, wastewater and solid waste together. Again, they're similar. Their fund balance is in good shape. Water's the strongest. Wastewater is improving. We've made steps in the last five years to improve wastewater balance and that's working as well as solid waste this last year. And then there's a lot of general little governmental grants. The grants, the trusts, the governmental impact fees internals that we kind of lumped together and they're all operating just fine with a positive fund balance. Looking across the bottom of the sheet there, down here, you can see that of the 16 million that we're projecting to be remaining at the end of the fiscal year, fiscal year '21, year and two months from now, 16 million, that covers the 20% fund balance reserve, the 7.7 million there. So that's good. 20% isn't a big fund balance. We talked about maybe needing more, maybe needing less, but we have unassigned of almost another 14%. So we do at the 13.1 million, that's about 34% fund balance. So that if things do get worse, which we of course hope that they won't, that we'll start seeing improvements. If we end up with another shutdown in October or whenever the flu comes back, which, again, you, I listen to economists all day and some of them are clear that they're all projecting a steady rise out of this. And they're quick to point out, there's not an epidemiologist out there that agrees with that. So we'll actually have to see what the realities hold. So a 13.1 million dollar fund balance in these times, taking into account that includes use of our contingencies to implement employee pay issues, however, or not however, but to some level, the council has that authority is great news, I feel. It puts us in a good position as we move forward. Obviously, there's reserves of fund balance, but as we go across, streets fund, again, low fund balance, little lower than we'd like to see it at 463. But we have that 3.5 million dollar project that we're holding to make sure revenues come in. And we really do not anticipate actually being at 463. We anticipate revenues hopefully will come back, especially in relation to gas tax as well. And again, the rest of them are pretty self-explanatory across there. And I just open it up to any specific questions.
Yeah, Mark, that 16 million dollar general fund fund balance.
13.
How much of that is the amount indeed to cover 20% of the general fund?
It's right here. It's the.
That's 7.
7.7, yeah. And then, like I said, we have another 14% on top of that at 5.5. So this 13 million that's unassigned is actually more of a 34% reserve for, you know, I'd say rainy day, but it's already raining, so.
Flooded.
Any other questions on fund balance?
Yeah, I had a question, a couple of questions. If your projection of TPT revenue is at negative 15%, what happens if it's much deeper than that? What if it's negative 20 or 25?
Well, like I say, the negative 15 is actually negative 20. If it's negative more than that, we'd have to see how much more. If you're talking a little bit, council could decide we have fund balance to cover it this year. Hopefully, the recovery will come type of thing. Let's, you know, address it in next budget year. If it's more than that, we can look at further freezes throughout the year. That's why we're going to be back every two, two months with a schedule like we showed you for March. And I'll have April by the budget hearings. So we'll be able to see the terrible month before the budget hearings. But it's not a decision, you know, we're not going to set this and come back a year from now. We're going to look at this every two months and make decisions as we go. And that's the only way you can do it with so many uncertainties.
So do you think that the 30-plus percent contingency or rainy day balance in the general fund wouldn't be enough to cover some of those worst-case?
Depends how worst-case we get, obviously. That's why we got to look at it as we go. I mean, if you're talking it's down 20% instead of 15, what's that mean?
Mark, let's go back and look at that slide on 12.
Sure.
It says the sales tax general fund, you're doing a reduction of 15%, which equals 2.6 million, right?
Yes.
Okay, so, all right, let's get crazy and double it. It'd be additional 2.6 million.
Right. Be another 2.6. So we still would be in our unassigned.
The unassigned fund balance is 5.4.
Right. Over the 20%.
So you could have a reduction that's double what you're projecting and still absorb it with half of the unfun, unassigned fund balance.
You know, not that, yeah, yes, absolutely. It's true. If that happened, though, you'd be wondering where, where is it stopping? We'd be taking other actions as we go.
I'm just going out on a limb to say that it's doable and.
Absolutely. And a good point, that's what I was trying to get across. That 13 million is a great cushion to have as we look at this.
And how about airport services projecting slightly higher? How are we going to get more airport service revenue when we're not operating with very much airport service operations?
I'll let Robin speak to that. Do you want the overhead, Robin? Want the overhead?
Thank you. Put that over there.
Second.
Okay. Somehow I knew you'd ask that question, Phil. So we made a separate slide and what we wanted to show is I was actually matching the expenditures and the revenues to show you what was happening. It was going to be a shortage of 81, but there was a final last minute budget adjustment on finances slide. So it was actually, the shortage is closer to 61,000 for the year. What this does not reflect is the fact that we're allowed to bill back to these projects with staff time. So we anticipate a minimum of approximately a $150,000 that we can bill back to the FAA. You can't do it in advance, but once the staff time is spent on that, you send them a bill and it's paid. And right now, under the current CARES Act, if it's like the Charlie project, it's 100% funded by the federal government. They have removed the local share. So this is what we're anticipating is, is getting back the $150,000. So we're actually going to show a surplus in our operating account for the airport enterprise account. In addition, we took a real conservative approach due to COVID on what our revenues will be for the next year. So we reduced by $100,000 our estimation of our landing fees, our fuel flowage fees, our parking, no CPI adjustments on hangar rent increases, things like that. We do believe that the revenues will probably come in stronger than that. Right now, the airlines are predicting for third quarter to be about a 25% of normal traffic. Fourth quarter to be about 50% of normal traffic. And so we do anticipate that even like the second flight, we were only going in at a minimum of the 12 round trips a week. And we already got notification that the last week in June, they're going to go to the 14. They're showing, so that's landing fees and overnight fees as well. So we're seeing an uptick in the number of people flying as well.
So what do our employments look like in the last month?
In the last month? Well, for the month, they're way down. We're talking about fewer than 200 employments for the month of April, was it? Yeah, we're looking at about, right now, this month, about 20% load factors. And so we're talking about nine, 10 people on, on average on flights, but for the next month, they're going up.
I know some of the major airlines are flying virtually empty flights just because they need to maintain their ability to have gate control, right, on those gates?
Right, yes.
So is that impacting us as well in any way?
It impacts us in the sense that people have less opportunity for connectivity. So there aren't 10 flights a day to New York or the East Coast out of Denver, they're down to six or seven. But what's interesting is that they had really cut back quite a bit. And now several of the airlines are saying, well, no, wait a minute. We're going to add a few more flights and try this out. An example of that is Frontier is adding more flights. So we're seeing some bounce back already, probably more quickly than maybe we anticipated, knock on wood. So we are, we are hoping that with good cleanliness and, you know, hygiene practices of the airline, people are going to see that there are safe alternatives. To give you an example of what we're doing in our carriers, you know how there's four rows on site, on the CRJ 200s? In the third row, which is, it's completely empty, it's not sold. So you can sit as pairs on the left side, you can sit as individuals on the right side. And it gives people that feeling of space that they need for the social distancing. Masks are being provided at the ticket counter if folks don't come with masks. The airlines are being cleaned between every flight and they're getting in the fogging machines within the next week, week and a half. So they'll be fogging them fully. So we think that the confidence is going to come back. So we're seeing an interest.
I know I was listening to Parker Northrup, who made a presentation to our Rotary Club about the, and he handles the flight training at AmeriRiddle.
Yes.
He's expecting some substantial increase in the number of students using their, their planes. Do we benefit from additional operations from AmeriRiddle flight training?
Yes. In fact, when they increase their fuel sales, the fuel flowage fee is passed through to the city. So that's great. Yes, they did resume their flight training, their normal freight training on Saturday. They're estimating between 70 and 100 operations a day. a day. So that's fantastic to see that they're going back in and of course, engaging in safe practices for those students and their instructors. And we have seen them acquire additional aircraft, so more single engines, more twins. And we're looking at the possibility of near doubling their fleet in the next year. So we may be going from 235,000 operations last year to literally, we may be going over 300,000 operations in the next 18 to 24 months on an annual basis.
So if you analyze the passenger usage out of PRC as far as is it primarily vacations or recreational trips or how much business related, so that we can kind of tie the recovery of the community's confidence in being able to travel again, expect, expected increase in employments. Do you get what I'm saying?
Yeah. Well, what we're looking at is we're a good split between leisure and business travel. There's actually a lot more business travel than folks realize. In some cases, we've had some folks who are traveling, had traveled, what, 20, 21 times to St. Louis prior to the COVID shutdown in a year, year and a half period. So a lot of business travel. Now nationally, what we're seeing in business travel is it's taking a bigger hit than leisure travel. Folks who are expecting to travel in leisure, it's only down about 45% from what folks expected. Business is taking a harder hit.
So does that mean you probably have a little more confidence in our ability to kind of recover from flight operations than national airline impact?
Yes. A lot of folks don't realize that we, our air carrier traffic is only about 1% to 2% of the total air traffic out of Prescott. Prescott is, you know, one of the busiest airports in the country, in fact, in the world. And so as a result, with all this flight training operation, it's looking to resume to, to pre-COVID levels more quickly. And so we are going to see nothing but increases in, in general aviation operations at the airport. So total flight operations will increase and expected total fuel flowage will also increase.
And that's all the questions I have. That's at least a little more confidence in the necessity of airport flight operations continuing and benefiting to the community at large.
It is a huge benefit to the community and the students are encouraged to come back to campus. In fact, the campus is going to open, Embry-Riddle is going to open to residential hall and in, on-campus classes and summer B, which is June 30. So we're going to see an increase in the number of the students returning to the campus very shortly.
Robin, I had a question.
Yeah.
Looking at the way the airlines are looking at cutting back operations, ultimately that could mean cutting back pilots. And what do you see going forward if, if the major carriers cut back pilots, then doesn't that affect ultimately Embry-Riddle's flight operations?
Actually, it's welcome. The pilot shortage has been a problem for a long time and that's really affected the flight training schools because they could not keep instructor pilots. The moment they reached a certain number of hours, they were gone. That's the people that you need to train the next generation of pilots. And the pilot shortage is still being projected even beyond the COVID crisis. That's happening. There's another trend, and I'm sorry, this is a budget meeting, but we could have a separate one on airports if you'd like. But the next trend that we see that's happening is they're going to be weeding out the inefficient airplanes. And how that's probably going to affect us is part of what's coming up in the capital slide, which I'll be addressing specifically in a moment, which is basically we can expect that there may be slightly larger aircraft coming. That will allow you to use a pilot to transport more people, you know, in a slightly larger airplane. Instead of two flights, you might have one flight, but with a bigger airplane. So we'll see if that trend bears out.
Thank you.
Dr. Sabata, thank you. I have a question about our runway extension or expansion. Is that going to be proceeding on schedule or do you expect any delays due to the COVID crisis?
I think it actually may be expedited as a result of COVID.
Great.
We'll talk more about that and also the federal match share. That may be an opportunity for the, the next few years as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. I had an additional question regarding golf courses and golf course revenue.
Okay.
I know we're projecting a slight improvement, even though it's modest, about 5,000 more than
Golf course service, yes, 5,000, 0% increase.
So can Mr. Baines explain that?
Yes, Councilmember Giddard, there is a slight increase in there. Remember, we went through the road construction project for 18 months that kind of affected our previous years. So we anticipate
Lower benchmark before?
Yes.
Yeah. So rounds per month and that kind of thing is going to compensate for either a lower benchmark or how does that work?
Over the course of the year, we're going to be doing better. Actually, the golf courses really, even though, as you know, we've had to go up single carts and, but we're still doing 200, 300, 200 or 300 rounds a day, some weekends, 400 rounds. So really, we're doing a lot better out there.
That's, that's another piece of good news.
Yes.
Any other questions on the operating budgets before we get into the capital? Well, let's get into capital. Airport, got $95 million over the next six years. Any questions? No. We'll pull it up here and let Dr. Sabata walk you through the next two slides.
Thank you. Yeah, it's kind of busy out there. So on airport only funded projects for the next year, what we're looking at is about $450,000 for the pavement preservation that's required to maintain the ample pavements that we have out there. The master lock system is actually a combination of master lock, but it's actually access control and badging system. One of the things I just mentioned was the fact that the airline may choose to upgrade the aircraft. If they choose to upgrade to the more efficient, for example, Embraer 170 or 175 aircraft, we're looking at the aircraft being a 74-seat aircraft. What that means for us is that once you get past 61 seats, we have to go to full airport access control. And so we're talking over 800 badges alone at Embry-Riddle. So this is an idea of when you go to full airport badging, you have to have an access control and badging system. The good news is you can see down below that the security upgrades project was approved by ADOT and I want to tie those two together. So I'll come back to that in just a moment. In the top part, we're also looking at the carryover of the runway three right, two one left focused extension planning study that you mentioned, Councilmember Rusing. It is continuing. That planning study, I'll have the results back in the next few months and we'll be visiting council to give you the results of that study. So that will be basically the, the interim or the, I should say, the immediate step that we have to do for extending the runway.
Is that the EPA study?
This is actually a planning study before the environmental study. So the steps are planning, environmental, land acquisition, design and construction.
Where do they count the rabbits?
Yes, the rabbit counting. Actually, there's a wildlife study I'll be talking about. Yeah, next, the environmental assessment, which should be a year-long study. We're visiting with the FAA this year to see if we can get it expedited by one year. If we can get that moved up, do land acquisition concurrent, we could move into design very quickly.
Nice. That's really good news.
It is. It's exciting. We'll see as we move through the ACIP process, it does. And frankly, because right now it's 100% funding on federal grants, we hope that continues. We've heard CARES Act 2 is coming out and the latest number that we got is somewhere between 1 and 2 million additional dollars may be coming to the airport under CARES 2. So we'll see if that, that comes to fruition.
Who makes the Embraer? Isn't that Brazilian or something?
Yes.
So we know that Boeing here in the United States is having some real difficulties.
Yes, they are.
What about Embraer manufacturing out of Brazil?
Yes, they are facing some challenges, some supply chain challenges. Brazil's being hit hard by COVID. So that is an issue. But right now, what happened was that our particular carrier, SkyWest Airlines, you know, it's United Express operated by SkyWest, acquired several of the 175s in a recent change that occurred within the regional group. There was a elimination of a carrier and all those planes largely came to SkyWest. And when they started looking at the operating and maintenance costs of, for example, our 200s, our CRJ 200s, they were far higher to, you know, to operate, the cost of operation than say, the Embraer. So they're looking seriously at that. Now, there are some union considerations in here. It's called a scope clause. That's a different conversation, but it talks about a limitation in smaller communities about what size aircraft you can get. But in the middle of this COVID situation, all bets are off. Airlines are going back and reevaluating fleets. This morning, Delta announced that it's basically relieving itself of all of its 717s Boeing aircraft and going to Airbus. So you're seeing huge changes, but it's for the efficiency.
So would a delay in going to that larger Embraer, because of some of these things, benefit the airport here?
Well, the advantage to travelers would be that in upgaging the aircraft, there would be more seats on the plane. The advantage to the carrier is if they go from two to one flight, they only have one set of pilots operating it. So it addresses pilot shortage issues. We like having multiple flights to Denver to give people choice. So that could be a disadvantage. I don't know whether or not they would reduce the number of flights, but of course, right now, the fact that we have, you know, three flights is more than they contracted with under essential air service. So they recognize this is a good market. We think they'll continue. The other advantage is that the aircraft actually doesn't take as much runway to take off. It's more, more powerful, particularly in the summer months. Now, it's not a huge difference, but it's enough that we're recording it in our planning study that says if we go to that, that platform sooner, then maybe we won't need quite as much length in the runway. But we're still going through that analysis and I'll be reporting back on that.
We might not have to bump passengers like we
Well, hopefully, that's, that's one possibility is that you wouldn't lose as many passengers onboard to heat conditions. And by passengers, meaning that the seats would be blocked. I don't want people to feel it's necessarily always a bumping situation. Okay?
It's the altitude, right?
Yeah, exactly. So going down the list also, there's a couple of things up there. There's some, another carryover is the new terminal equipment. A few things that we have left to do, we have to factor in the move of moving the TSA equipment and we have to recalibrate it. We also have, we have to move the TSA wing. Everybody's familiar with that wing that sticks out at the end that you have to go through screening. That's the actual obstruction to the taxiway Charlie project that we're going to have to. We've got a temporary waiver on it, but the moment that the old terminal is
Building wing, not
Yeah, the building wing off the terminal. Yeah, once that happens, yeah, really, then we, we have to move that immediately. So that's part of the airport only funded. Now, down below on the airport grant-funded projects, the taxiway Charlie realignment, the first phase of that is roughly 5 to 5.3 million, 100% federally funded. The second phase of that may or may not be funded in, depending on how much money is left at the end of the fiscal year, this fiscal year with the FAA, it'll probably be a second phase of that project in the next year. So that's another 10 million next year. The replacement airline terminal, obviously, it's continuing. Hey, if you get a chance, come out and visit. We'll walk the site. They've put up the glue lamb, the wood beams. It's fabulous. Security upgrades, this is another exciting one. We didn't think we were going to get it and we got $1.7 million from the state of Arizona to do all the perimeter fencing security upgrades. And so that will address all of the access control systems and ready us in case we immediately have to upgrade to full security, which will be, it's amazing that they covered that. And the state has announced that they're going to the transportation board and asking for this to be with no match. We not, we hope, we hope that comes through. If it, if it requires a match, it's a 10%. The new terminal baggage handling system, many of you've walked the site, see that we actually have it drawn on the ground. So you can, you can see that we're actually going to have a baggage carousel. That's going out for bid in the next, next month or two. And we actually did get some CARES Act funding, an extra million that I came to you, you all on. And the cost of that is included in that CARES Act. It's received as operating budget money because that's the way the FAA said. And then they said you can feel free to use it back for something like this, but you receive it as operating reimbursement. And then finally, the extension, the runway extension project, that's, that's going to be next year. That's the, Councilmember Blair, that's the environmental assessment, the counting the rabbits study, as you mentioned.
Do they already count those ones?
Well, you
I mean, I don't need to read, but I mean
There you go.
So that was just this year. And just this year, we're looking at $21 million in grant-funded projects. As we move forward for the next five years, there's another $69 million in grant-funded projects that we are positioning ourselves to receive. The city's share of that, to cut to the chase, is about 7 million over five years.
So Robin, I was on a call last week. It was a one for the COVID-19 calls and Secretary Chow came on.
Oh, yeah.
And she was, I tell you, she is saying, you get this money and you use this money.
That's right.
You spend this money because many people, and she said it, many people are saying, we've got to get those airplanes, get them loaded. That's what's going to bring this economy back. And so she, and she said, that's what the president wants to see happen. Of course, we all do. But she was definitely on about the CARES Act funding.
Well, we are so appreciative of Secretary Chow's support and, and President Trump and his administration's support. This is quite an extraordinary time for airports and we were remembered amazingly. So, and we're very appreciative.
Absolutely.
So I'll be back a few times in the next few years, making good progress. Thank you. Thank you. Any questions?
Does that mean you're going to stay around that long?
You want me?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. Sure. That'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. The, the rest of the non-utility capital doesn't take very long here. So we'll just run through it real quick. And then Craig will walk you guys through the utility and streets capital. So this, the next two slides, talk about the, or three slides, I guess, talk about the capital by departments. The funding source, we didn't have room for a key on there, but it's pretty clear. S is for streets, G is general fund, IMP is impact fee and then grant. So we have our open space acquisition, which continues to be carried year to year out there, 1.8 million. That is scheduled to be carried again. We have the West Granite Creek Park improvements. These are, again, are carryovers. Like I was talking about, these are projects that are already committed, already underway. So they're just being rolled from this budget year 20 into 21, as opposed to new impact to the general fund. That's 500,000 from the general fund and 500,000 from the impact fee fund. The Peavine Glassford Hill Trail connect, connection is a grant. It's a new one. Golar Lake Ramada refurbishment. I believe this has to do with roofs on the Ramadas are in pretty bad shape and we don't want to lose that asset or have damage to it. So for 20,000, we thought we should move forward with that. Additional picnic tables, that's part of the impact fee 15. Golf course has a few things. Again, there's carryover for a consultant for an irrigation system out there. That's again, from this year just to next year, not a new project. There's some issue with some of the restaurant equipment in the Centennial Center and the Manzanita Grill that needs to be upgraded. Again, relatively small items. Fire department has our biggest projects for the new year out of the general fund. Their portable radios were replaced with the PD this year. Fire was scheduled to have them replaced in 21 and that's a project the chief really didn't feel could wait. So we needed to move forward with that. That's 395. Vehicle replacements, again, fire trucks take years to build for some reason. They haven't heard of assembly lines or something, but this is one fire truck that we'll pay for over the next two years as they slowly put it together. The drill, drill ground improvements were postponed. However, we have a engineer plan that is already underway. So we need to finish that contract. That's the 60,000 that was carried over from this year to next. But the implementation was put off a year because of the economic situation. Again, another item that was purchased, it's not received yet, is a skid unit for a truck, firefighting unit that lays in the back. And then the fire records management system is another carryover from this year to next. Police, the vehicles, that's a big carryover. That's the police cars that were ordered this year. They've been ordered that they're being delayed getting here. So they're probably not going to get here until after the new year. So they're carried over. The police have two new vehicles that just couldn't wait. Again, the whole FAB, the fixed, the equipment review board did a great job coming back with a very skinny down plan. It isn't that this equipment doesn't need to be replaced, but it can all wait a year in these challenging times so that we can keep service levels where they're at. So, but there were a few and these were two of them that they just felt were in such dire straits, they needed to be replaced this year. There's also an issue with some interview room cameras and the fleet cameras. Again, that deals with a Again, that deals with a serious issue as far as making sure we have that for evidence and stuff. So that's a project we felt needed to move forward. Placement of councils in the dispatch center. It's a kind of an ongoing project. This is actually a carryover. It didn't get done this year. And again, that's half-covered by partners. So it's only $75,000 continuing from this year to next. And the Granite Creek corridor that we talked about, it was going to be partially funded from the general fund. We kept it in the budget as 100% grant. We're looking for corporate sponsors to help with that, like the, you know, the Olson's Grain Corridor Trail, something like that. Or, yeah, you know, we got a lot of good ideas. We'll be talking to all you council people later. And then the community development block grants, of course, are in there. Overall, again, a lot of this is carried forward. I guess we should have separated there, but a big chunk, all but $900,000 of that 2.4 is just being moved from this budget year to next budget year. So with that, I will turn over to Craig to go through our very aggressive water and wastewater plan and all of his exciting pictures.
Good afternoon. Maybe aggressive, but not as aggressive as this year.
Take a breather there, Craig.
Well, yeah, definitely maybe get down to just a little more manageable.
Yeah.
So to start off on public works capital projects, on the street side. So we have four primary different categories, types of projects. So on the pavement side, we start with the maintenance, preservation, rehabilitation projects. Then we have circulation projects, and then total reconstruction. And then some drainage projects that are just straight-out drainage, but they're also included in with the major reconstruction projects. So on the preservation, rehabilitation and maintenance projects. So for instance, up there, we have, the rejuvenator is the bottom-left picture, crack sealing in the center, and then some mill pave on the right. For instance, they are just finishing up this week on the crack sealing, so we'll have another 342,000 pounds of crack seal material out there on the streets, one crack at a time. In this, under this project then, or type of projects, some of the things that we've got coming up will be chip seal for like Wes Gurley. So then we can get that all be a uniformed, continuous look, get all the crack sealing covered up, get the old stripes covered up, and significantly improve the safety and the view on that project. Others along with chip seal will be Leonetta, Sixth and Moller area, some mill pave we've got will be on Smoke Tree. And then there'll be another project that I actually will be bringing up next week as part of preservation. That's going to be associated with the old mill pave streets that we did like 10 and 12 years ago. When those were done, they were considered that it'd be about a five-year life expectancy of that process. We're now at 10 or 12 years. And there are many of them that are in very, you know, bad condition now. So the project that we'll be looking at next week includes 16 road lane miles worth of those streets. And we're, again, several of our projects lately have been newer technologies, different technologies, and looking at how to stretch our dollars as far as we can on those streets. So that project is going to be a newer technology and continuous of kind of recycle, reuse of what we already have, and then, you know, improve it. And we're looking at a technology now that has life expectancy of up to 20 years. So even better than what we did previously. So this budget here actually includes a reduction. Last year, when we put the budget together, we had 8.5 million in this type of project. This reflects reduction down to $7 million for '21, but there's a $4 million of carryover because of some of the projects that are, that we'll be bringing forward next week. We'll not be able to pay out before the end of the fiscal year. So that's how we get to that 11. We're also projecting to reduce this type of project in '22, down to $7 million as well, as Mark mentioned earlier, in order to maintain the fund balance on the street side.
Craig, what are the projects next week, just so they know?
That will be Smoke Tree, Mill and Fill, and then the next process to the mill pave projects.
I know some people are concerned about Smoke Tree.
So...
Yeah, I was just going to ask you about Smoke Tree. So will you have to, we'll be shutting down part of the road, right, and sign?
We're just going to close the whole thing for a couple of weeks.
Well, that would be nice, too. Thank you very much. Well, this is so needed, I can tell you, because people are dodging on that road. So what's actually the timeline on that?
Next week.
Okay. Well, I just know I'm going to get answers when I get home from neighbors, so that's all. Thank you.
Yeah, we'll have it all next week, then. So the next one then, street recirculation projects. Yes?
You know, the new software program that's supposed to analyze the condition, prioritize the most effective investment for these preservations and potential millings, et cetera. And then the supposed proximity component to prioritize ones that are maybe closer to the downtown core and make sure that high-traffic areas are going to make, be maintained and last longer. And you were talking about the new technology of the material that's going to last, allow it to be in top condition for a longer period of time. Has all that been incorporated in your plan?
On the 20 plan, we had to do manual extraction in order to put that together for our 20 plan. Right now, they are finalizing the inclusion of the proximity. So then it's bringing in where, when the programmer initially came out, it came out with, you know, all these streets, but they were too small a pieces.
Right.
So then it would identify a piece here to do, a piece there, a piece here. So it's bringing in the proximity, and it's bringing similar street conditions, and as some of those you mentioned, street classification, all those things. So it brings them in, so it brings in a proximity. So then our work is more efficient and effective in an area than jumping around all over. That is being finalized, and it will guide what we do in '21.
Well, I think that's sorely needed. And cutting corners for that type of street work has caused us to be in such a kind of poor condition overall today, right?
Yes.
So with better utilization of those dollars, then even though we might want to handle them maybe more efficiently than we had in the past, then we should be able to eventually get to a point where our overall road condition, within what, five to seven years, is probably substantially better than it is today.
Yeah, one of the key items that came out of that program is it has identified that for the overall condition of all our streets, so we now have, and I forget what the number is, we now have that number of the overall average condition of the streets. In order to maintain at that number and not getting better, not getting worse, we need about $6.5 million in this program to maintain there. That's where we'd set it up to put that 8.5 million last year to try to gradually and progressively get better. With our funding challenges right now, we did drop down to $7 million. We can at least still maintain and maybe gain just a little bit.
And that was based upon the value of the type of material you were using at that time? And now you're saying the material you have should be able to last five or 10 years versus in the past, it was only about five years or less?
Or consider doing more of a total reconstruct, you know, removing and completely paving a road versus utilizing kind of some of the alternative technologies that we've had on a couple of projects just lately. So then ultimately, the dollars per square yard are less, so then we have more dollars to do more square yards.
And can we take advantage of the reduction in traffic right now so there'll be less disruption of vehicle movement while this is occurring?
Yeah, we have been, and that was part of the Wilkinson project that we recently just brought forward, and it's under construction this week. So that's one specifically where it did impact the project. As well as Summit McCormick Beach. The reduced traffic has helped that project move along quicker. So the street circulation projects, that's specifically the Corsair Connector, which is under construction right now to connect between Wilkinson and the southern end of Corsair currently. So the upper right-hand picture is the dirtwork that's going on on that project. And they are getting ready to do underground work on it as well. And then another one that we consider as part of circulation is the widening and correction of the curve on Willow Creek Road to help with circulation.
Where can I start?
I have to bring forward the approval or the request for approval to reimburse the developer for the funding, and we are negotiating on that bid right now. So that probably will come forward first meeting in June.
Excuse me, I have a question. Thank you. Speaking of the Willow Creek Curve realignment, what about the road, our new road to the airport? Is there any expectation to start working on that?
You're referring to Deepwell Ranch East?
Yes, our new access to our new terminal.
Well, there are improvements right around the terminal and airport area that are changing Crystal and Janine going into the terminal. And as far as Deepwell Ranch East, then, as we've previously discussed, the corner, along with a development project in that area, then will be addressing the future extension of Deepwell Ranch out into the ranch land, as well as make alterations to that intersection.
Do you know when that'll happen, or is it just up in the air?
Right now, we do not have a timeframe, no.
Thank you.
So reconstruction projects. So as Mark mentioned, we have Penn and Eastwood. Penn Eastwood is one project on here, but that will be a provisionary reconstruction project, depending on funding. That is a major complete reconstruction. All-new water sewer, addition of storm drain, a detention basin, all-new pavement curb and gutter sidewalk. So that one will be hanging, you know, in, kind of in limbo as the year goes on. Robinson Drive will be finishing up. So those are just carryover funds to finish Robinson Drive. And there's a little bit of carryover for Summit McCormick Beach, but for the most part, that project will be done around early part of July. Straight-up drainage improvement projects. Items we have on here, currently, there's a $190,000 grant through FEMA, and that is doing computer simulation engineering analysis checks net on the floodplain to do corrections to our floodplain mapping. Ultimately, that can help our businesses, property owners in regards to floodplain insurance. So that's going on. And then we have the $600,000 here listed under the Flood Control District as pending. The county is kind of in the same position that we are, is unsure of funding. So they've posted or labeled our flood control district share as pending. So then that, again, will kind of dictate part of the Penn Eastwood project here as well. On the pictures here is, bottom-left is an improvement that we did on Hornet after the major monsoons that we had 2018 in Yaupai Hills. Found some deficiencies in the original design and construction of the development out there. So that's something we did there to help, as well as Rossar and Campbell Detention Basin that has helped, something as small as that has made a significant difference to the Flora Campbell neighborhood below that.
So Craig, I hope I can ask this. So Craig, how is the, how's that working in Yaupai Hills on Hornet? Is that seeming to be handling the...
It made a significant difference.
Because that was a big issue.
Yes, we haven't had real big rains since, but the rains we did have, when guys went out there and checked, that it was, you know, capturing 100% of whatever was coming down the street.
Great news.
We're working on that as well. So then moving on to water capital projects. So on the water side, we do water production, water distribution, and water quality projects. So production primarily deals with the wells, storage tanks, pump stations. And then distribution is primarily all the pipelines and delivery system out to the residents. So on the production side is going to be some of our largest projects, largest expenditures that we're going to have. They're at that total of $22 million. That is a large carryover included in that due to the intermediate booster pump station that we've gained greatly here just recently. And I'm sure in early July, we'll be bringing you information and/or a proposed GMP associated with that project. That involves replacing the entire booster station in Chino Valley, which is the heart of our water system, as far as sending the primary water in here. And then an intermediate station that will be out in the Deepwell Ranch area that will allow us to incorporate the water production from the airport area into the entire system that comes into the heart of the city. Zone 41 is the two Mingus tanks. We call them, they're up on top of the hill above Willow Creek Road and Rossar there. So that's a replacement of that tank, new pump station and pipeline connecting the two. Zone 56 Pipeline, that one kind of got an interesting twist on Friday. That pipeline is along the Highway 69 corridor by U-Haul over to Lowe's. And we were on a timeline to get that done prior to Highway 69 widening. And unfortunately, State Board of Transportation on Friday changed their outlook for expansion projects that has stalled, I guess I'll say, to Highway 69 widening.
Yeah, and I can speak to that, Craig. Hopefully, it's not completely stalled. That's staff's interpretation. Hopefully, the state board will keep some things moving, because it not, not only was I-69, it was also I-17. So hopefully, we'll be able to keep that project, Highway 69. That's really important to our area.
And we're going to stay...
So we're working on that.
We're going to stay on track to get our project done so that then we're not in the way for the widening when this comes. The production well number five, AP, so that's the new well out in the airport area. And that is under construction currently, so this will just be finishing it out so it can be online during '21. Zone 30 Pump Station is going to be a little pump station to bolster fire protection in the Cathedral Pines area in the southern part of the city. So as our project in the Hazely Hidden Valley Ranch wraps up, then we're able to move forward with this next one then in order to improve the next piece. So that will take care of everything along that southern border of the city. We'll have much better water delivery capabilities and fire protection. And then lastly on there, Zone 51 Water Main, that's to just get started on that. We have an application in to state land and/or request for information in the state land. We have to gather an easement on state land. That will connect a pipeline from Williamson Valley Road and Pioneer Parkway to the north to Longview Estates. And as well, ultimately, then Stringfield Ranch may connect to that as well and feed in into that area. So we're just beginning negotiation of the state land there, and then we'll also initiate design during this year. Water distribution projects. Now that we succeeded, the upper-right picture there is that the bore project that we did through the solid rock from Skyline down to Meadowbrook. We held off on design of the rest of the system to make sure we succeeded at this first. We didn't want to have all our eggs in one... We didn't want to have all our eggs in one basket and have it all designed and then find out that this route did not work. So now that this has, we've succeeded here. We have reinitiated the design for the rest of the improvements in there. So that will build larger pipeline from Thumbute Road and Sherwood area up to Meadow Ridge to connect into this area. And then up top on Skyline, it will go to our tank that's up at the very top of the hill up there and finish out the 2427 improvements. Sundog Ranch Road upsizing, we just discussed that at the last council meeting. So that will be under construction in July. Downtown Water Main replacements. We're going to be initiating review and start design for some of the replacements of the 80, 90-year-old cast iron that's in the downtown area. That's what that will be. And Quoaca Crossing Water Main, that is in partnership with the Yavpai Prescott Indian Tribe. Quoaca Crossing will be a new roadway from the base of the hill from Bucky's Casino and the resort, from there over to the Yavpai Connector. And in conjunction with that, we will replace the water lane line, upsize it in order to be able to feed the volume that we, volume and pressure that we're supposed to feed to their commercial areas.
So Craig, the downtown water replacements?
Yes.
What's the projection of when that might happen, during our tourist time or?
Yeah, that's everything that will have to come into play in that. And one of the, again, with new technologies, one of the things that we will be looking at there and thinking about is it may not be a dig and replace. We may consider slip lining it.
Like we've done with the camera and?
Yep, so then we can have limited excavation. Because all of the services were replaced with the downtown enhancement projects that we did in '98, '99, 2000. So all the services, box and yokes, the meter setups, those were all new then. So they're only 20 years old. So if we can replace the main lines and connect back up to those service lines, if we go alternative, we don't have to make it look like a bomb.
Tear up, good.
Water quality projects. This is going to be, it just finishes out the contract, the study and the package that's supposed to come back to us in regards to potential water improvement projects. And then there's a little bit of money in here, but we do not have a project scope right now planned, considered. It is kind of contingency. So depending what comes back in the final plan, then we could consider a project. And we go wastewater projects. So we have wastewater collection and wastewater treatment projects under this category. Some of the biggest ones that we've recently been doing. Like here on the wastewater collection side, the airport trunk main is just finishing up. Again, when we went forward with that contract, the contract dictated that the project was to be done in January of '21. It is online and flowing right now, and they are finishing up, cleaning up, going to be seeding, doing things like that. Expect to be out of there in July. So that has been an amazing project. And we believe with what we've done there that it'll be here 100 years from now, taking care of everybody that follows along. Continuing with that then.
You on the record for that, Craig?
I hope I could see it.
That's amazing.
Yep, so next along the lines here, Sundog Trunk Main. We have Phase B to do as well as Phase C. Phase B would be from the VA going north on State Route 89 up to Prescott Lakes Parkway, where we've already put in the first phase. The SR 89 lift station would be feeding that Phase B pipeline. And then C would be going from the VA all the way over to Miller Valley Road. So we will, we definitely believe that we will be doing some construction on pieces of C in '21. But then B and the 89 lift station, we're still in negotiating and working with the tribe on easements in order to be able to go forward with those projects. But with agreement that we're working on and/or, you know, working together, we have to have these funded, budgeted to be able to go forward when we succeed at whatever route we're going to go. And then also, we've started with a scope and fee for the Willow Creek Gravity Sewer. So that will be along Willow Creek Road, essentially from the Dairy Queen on Willow Lake Road over to Prescott Lakes Parkway to the east. So currently, we have two city and one private lift station along there, taking care of that route. This project will install gravity that will take all the flow over to the Prescott Lakes Regional Lift Station area. So that's right about Willow Lake Road, Prescott Lakes Parkway. Go over there, we will expand that, make that a redundant station. And then it'll be three less facilities that have to be maintained when it comes to pumping wastewater.
And is this all part of the centralization that we've been somewhat?
Airport trunk main, Sundog B and C and the lift station, absolutely, yes. The Willow Creek Gravity, that's a matter of just improving deficient lines that are out there as well as making it more efficient by doing away with pumping facilities that take a lot more time, effort, money to operate. And there are no treatment projects, so we don't have anything there. So ultimately then on streets, so on the maintenance side, that is the preservation as well as?
Before you go any further?
Yes, sir.
You know, we've been talking about, clamoring about sewer projects, and we had to stop our unsuhred areas in Prescott that we've talked so much about. And we've got our committee and commission together, we have yet to meet. And the city manager and I had discussed, the only way to ever get this done is to put in funds every year to do mainline connections. Where in this Public Works capital program, let's say, for instance, the low hanging fruit would probably be Antelope Hills, which is not on sewer. And to tie them into sewer, is there a dollar amount that has been put in here for contingency in case we move forward with that?
On this year, we did not create a specific project labeled for unsuhr areas, but we did carry some funding almost near the bottom under miscellaneous projects. And equipment is where we have some funding to be able to do that. We get our committee going, we come up with a plan. And yeah, then we get that plan in place, and we feel that we're ready to consider and go forward to something like that. We can go into design and we have the ability to.
Start engineering those things?
Yeah, there's a commitment to move forward, Councilman Blair. As soon as the committee can meet and start identifying low hanging fruit like Antelope Hills.
Okay, and you know, the Antelope Hills, I think, probably said more than that. I've had people say, why isn't the, why isn't Antelope Hills on sewer? And back in the day, because Sundog Ranch Road was uphill to Antelope Hills, there was no way to pump the sewage back to the plant at Sundog Ranch Road. Now that we're centralizing, we have a plant at the airport. All of Antelope Hills now is downhill. So that's the easiest one to take, all those houses out at Antelope Hills that are on septic systems, right next to our recharge facility, right next to the creeks, and put them on a sanitary sewer system. So I'm hoping we get something accomplished by this. We've been doing a lot of clamoring about it for years. So I guess we are scheduling forward through Public Works at first meeting in June.
Craig is going to probably schedule a meeting sometime in probably June. We were on delay because of the whole COVID concept, but I think we're moving forward with in-person meetings, hopefully next month.
And I want to say.
Can we do something? I mean, how comfortable is everybody?
I think we've already got it projected on the calendar.
For June? Well, that's fine, as long as, I'd like to just get a date and let all the players know that we're going to do that, so.
We're going to notify all the members.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, so again, on street side then, so we are at 11 million on the maintenance side. That is the preservation as well as rehabilitation. Then circulation will be the Willow Creek Road and Corsair. Finish those out for a total of the 20 million, 230, 649 on streets. Water, that 22 million again is the large pump station projects on the production side. And then wastewater collections then will be those larger trunk main projects in there. Vehicle replacements, that's a combination of the couple new as well as the carryovers because of the number of pieces that we're still waiting to come. So we'll be paying for them in '21. Miscellaneous, that then will also include some money towards the unsuhred areas. Miscellaneous, years ago, we had like five projects out there, all labeled with all different money in it. We lumped those together a few years ago just to make it a lot easier to follow. But that's things like, we have booster station upgrades that come up on the water side, PRV station upgrades. On the wastewater side, lift station upgrades and/or abandonments. So those are smaller projects that are in there, but we have to have funding and/or the mechanism to pay for those things when they do come up. So our total then on the capital side, we're down to 60 million, 278, 786. And definitely a little more manageable.
So Craig, are there opportunities out there for the commission, for Councilman Blair's to get grant funding from environmental groups or that we could add to this 1.2 million so we can?
That's going to be part of the committee that we're going to go over. We're going to explore all those types of ideas, grants.
I mean, this is so good for the environment, right?
Yes, if there's any federal funding, that's what the committee is going to be about, is to go over all those types of things.
Clean waterways, there's a lot of them.
Maybe we can help you with that, yeah.
So this is kind of the list then of the CIP projects, as well as then we have individual maps. And Mark, can we switch? Yeah, we'll switch over to PDF because then we can have a map that we can.
There's a mouse right there, you know, mouse or a keyboard.
Whoa. So this entire city, so airport up there, Yavpai Hills and the ranch. Then as we, let's see if it'll. So at the airport, this is the well. We have, that'll be the intermediate pump station out there where we're at. So we do have this map that we can share with you. Then you can kind of have an idea as well as that, the table. That will show where different things go. Here's the wastewater collection project along Willow Lake Road. Sundog Ranch Road here, water line. This will be the trunk main. So we have all the projects on this document if you'd like and/or if you have any questions towards that.
Lots of projects. I have a question inquiring minds want to know, Mr. Woodfield. When we start talking about employee pay raises, because these are secured funds in water, wastewater, solid waste, does it preclude using those funds for a percentage to pay for those employees that work within those departments for maintenance, for raises?
You know, and that's a question that comes up a lot when we're dealing with difficult budget times. Council in the past and city management has always looked at our employees as one group. How do you not give police raises when you're giving equipment operators raises? So even though there would be funds available in water because it's a secured revenue source, we have never separated and said, well, you guys get a raise this year, but the police and fire don't because they're in the general fund. It's always something we try to keep consistent across all the employees.
I was just thinking as a macro level viewpoint, the number of employees that are employed by a secure fund like water and sewer, solid waste. And if you took those out of the general fund, how many employees does that leave back in the general fund?
Well, they are, they're not paid out of the general fund. They are paid out of those funds. But we have a lot of employees in the general fund, police, fire, recreation. You know, there's a lot of, majority of our employees are in the general.
No, and I understand that. I was just wondering what the offset, if you took the same amount, let's say 2% and paid the employees out of the secured funds that work within those funds, it would reduce, would it not, the amount of money we'd spend in the general fund?
Well, that's the way it's done now. Whenever we talk about a pay raise, water employees are paid out of water.
That's what I wanted to know, if that's how it's separated.
It is, it is. Only the general fund employees are paid out of the general fund.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know, thank you.
All right, final slide is just kind of the remaining timeline here. We have a workshop next week. If council has a burning question that they want us to bring back more information on, be glad to be here, love to talk about budget, you know me. So if not, the next time we do this will be tentative budget adoption. That's when we bring the final legal schedules to you. June 9th might be a little early for me to have April numbers yet, but I will definitely have them by the 23rd. Once tentative budget is adopted by council, that gets published in the paper. The final budget cannot be higher than that. It can only be reduced if council chooses to reduce it. And then the final budget consideration and public hearings would be on the 23rd. And then the property tax levy would be done on the 14th. So with that, I would be glad to hear if you guys think we need a meeting next week. And if so, you'll need to tell me what you want to talk about so I can get information together.
So is there something that we need to know that we have covered?
No, this covered everything. That meeting is kind of put there in case you want, you have something that you don't feel was answered enough and you want more detail on it, that just gives us schedule, a time in the schedule to be able to bring that back to you.
We could also do that individually, right?
Exactly, and like I said early on, if you have individual things and you want to walk through all 10,000 individual accounts of this budget, give me a call, we'll sit down and go through it.
Does anybody see a need for another budget session next week since we endured all of today?
I think it's pretty, pretty well done.
Pretty well done, very well done.
I think there's quite a bit of flexibility in the budget itself to accommodate maybe more dire revenue drops that it's really hard to anticipate how the impact is going to be.
Exactly.
I think capital is pretty well identified. One of the questions I had, and this is probably for Craig again, knowing that we have that Narrows in the 89 Dells area and the fact that we even heard last year that the vehicle capacity in that area is about 18,000 vehicles per day. And right now, we're at about 15,000. And that's such a large project to be able to expand those granite walls. And I think we probably ought to start studying what that would mean and how it would be done, what the cost would be. A lot of people I've talked to have said, well, geez, if we started blasting in that area, you know, all these granite columns and things like that would be destroyed. And I know that there's so much new technology out there for being able to split granite in a way that doesn't cause that type of old type of technology concern. But I think it's, you know, with the 89 north to the airport, more, more passengers. But I think it's, you know, with the 89 north to the airport, more passengers going to the airport with the expansion of 89 north of Fippen. And now that we have more development in Walden Ranch and those areas, there's just bound to be more and more vehicles in there. And I think we need to start planning for that and studying it to make sure that we know how it's going to be done, when it's going to be done, and not wait for it to be a big bottleneck, causing all kinds of adjustments of kind of commuters and just general vehicle in that area. I know we brought that up last year, a year before, but nothing really been planned for it.
Okay, where we're currently at with it is that project is in the IIP, the Infrastructure Improvement Plan. We are currently collecting impact fees associated with that project, and we are looking at it to go in conjunction in the 23, 24 range with wastewater improvements that have to be done in the same corridor. We are going to be changing the pipeline that just blew up here in March. We're looking at changing the use of that pipeline, which will involve it being altered. Then we have to build a new effluent pipeline through that corridor. So in conjunction with those changes, those improvements, then we bring in the roadway widening at the same time. So we do it all with one large project. So we're looking at 23, 24. What we haven't done is actually initiate a, you know, kind of a design review for a concept, and we could consider doing something like that sooner.
Yeah, I just think it needs to be done because I think the public at large doesn't realize the necessity for it, how it would be done, and what the impact would be since that's such an essential north-south highway that's going to be impacting all the development around the airport, all of Deepwell Ranch, and the potential development of Arizona ECO plans as well. So I think that needs to be, needs to be understood and planned for so that the public understands how we're going to deal with that and not just think that it's going to somehow happen or not happen, and then, you know, people are driving around Willow Lake and all these other alternate routes that, you know, the public finds a way to get around it, right?
Okay, understood.
And I would agree with that. I mean, probably Craig, what, design is about 10% of the cost of a project usually, right? So it's first that the cost of the design, the plan?
Yes, design, total design-
Would be about 10%.
Is around 10% of the project cost. And-
So that needs some planning itself.
I want to say we've got earmarked at eight or nine million for the widening.
Are they going to explore other things? As an example, I drive that corridor probably 15 times a week, and I don't see a traffic issue in there. The only time that I do, very seldom, is during rush hours that we looked at adding a third lane, which there's room to do that in the existing format of that road to do a reverse lane coming in from Chino Valley in the morning and going out in the afternoon, opposed to-
That's an idea.
Blowing up the rocks.
Yeah.
Let me add something to that, looking forward into the future with the commercial development that's going to be going on in Chino Valley now that we're supplying water to them. We may have a decrease in traffic heading into town. And also with Arizona ECO, they're planning on a road connecting to Jasper that's going to be a major arterial right into Prescott Valley. And then as the growth continues up north and we get more commercial up there, they may just hop on 89A and go into Prescott Valley. So I think we need to maybe, you know, keep an eye on the changes that are taking place and maybe less traffic may be using that road to come into traditional Prescott. Thank you.
Okay, any other, can we go back to our discussion about next week's? Councilwoman Michelle, how do you feel about?
I agree with her.
Okay. Councilwoman Sheska?
We can do it individually.
Okay, all right.
I'm good. Probably individually, although, you know, when we get draft material, we've got blank pages in it. And then we found out that the full pages a couple hours ago. A lot of times when I think I have a pretty good understanding, questions occur afterwards.
Sure.
That we don't have a planned budget meeting to address.
I'm sure Mark and Jody would be more than happy to.
So I think I can probably go with individually.
Okay.
Great.
So Mark, you're off the hook for a big meeting next week.
Yeah, I had to wait to get the final economic information, so I did have a couple blank pages in those drafts.
That's a great presentation, really appreciate everything. Thank you. So any other comments, then this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jody.
Thank you, Jody.